Thank you, everybody. We're going to get started. I'm going to call to order the Grand Forks City Council's special meeting Monday, October 11th. Maureen, can we get a roll call, please?
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock. Cavani. Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, and we're going to try to get through this fairly quickly. We've got an Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration immediately following the cow. So I do have to leave early, so I'm hoping we can get to that in time. I've got to head down to Fargo as part of that Main Street deal. But I just wanted to first give a thank you to Tribal Chair Jamie Ajer. He invited me to a palo out in Dunseeth later part of the summer, and it really was a great opportunity to be there as an honored guest and get to see some of the tradition and the celebration. So I was truly honored to be able to do that, so I want to give him a thank you for that as well as Courtney Davis for helping to set that up. Tomorrow as well, we have joint city councils, county meeting, talking about the Grand Forks Air Force Base, and we'll have all the consultants out there. So that'll be a lot of exciting things going on and a lot of conversations we can have, and it's nice for everyone to be able to get around the same table and get to talk about that. Since this is a special meeting, we'll get rolling on this part. So we have two public hearing.
2.1, public hearing on payment in lieu of property development agreement for Block V LLC.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing first for item 2.1. Anybody here to speak on item 2.1? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mr. Goss, if you could give us just an update on that, and then we'll look forward.
Sure. Similar to what you did with the Beacon, you'll be passing a resolution tonight which would approve both pilot and development agreement. I'll just briefly go through the resolution. That was part of your packet. There are a number of factual findings. For example, in paragraphs 1.3 to 1.8, those are all supported by prior staff reports that have been issued back in, I think, December of 2020, when this first came before the council. Section 1.9 talks about the financial strength of the project has been reviewed by Baker Tilly. 1.10 and 1.12, that's the statutory requirement that we've involved the other taxing entities, the school district and the county, in approving or they're getting their approval for the particular tax incentive. Section 1.11, part of the process is we have to have communication with the Department of Commerce. We've done that several months ago. And then you'll notice in sections 1.14 and 1.15, there's a finding that this is in the best interests of the city with respect to this pilot, and that's a finding that needs to be made in order for the pilot to be granted by statute. We recited the statute that requires that. So again, the resolution would approve the pilot and the development agreement. And I will go through the development agreement with you briefly, just kind of give you some highlights. First, section one, it provides a number of definitions that are used throughout the agreement. I won't go through each of those except where it might be relevant to the discussion tonight. Section two is, sets forth the conditions for their development, things the developer needs to have in place, the plans, and get approved by the, it's really through the city inspector office, but there's a number of items that they need to comply with. Again, it's pretty standard stuff, section two. Section three is where the meat of this agreement is with respect to the property tax exemption. And I want to call your attention to the example that's on page 10. What we do is, this is an example for illustration purposes only, okay? You start out with what's called the incremental property value, which is a defined term. That's going to be the value that the city assessor will determine for the building each and every year, the improvements after the construction is done. And so the example that's given assumes after the first, after the construction is done the first year, you'll hit a $5.2 million value. Then you'll deduct the original property value for the buildings right now is about $1.6 million. That gets you to a subtotal, and you multiply that times 90%, and that becomes the pilot or the deduct as far as what the, ultimately what this property will be subject to property tax to. The second example is how do you arrive at, because some of the property is still going to be subject to property tax. That original $1.5 or $1.6 million will continue to be subject to property tax. The land itself will continue to be subject to property tax. It's got a value of about $112,000 or so. And then the 10% increase, the 10% of the valuation increase will also be subject to property taxes. This is only a 90% exemption. So for every incremental dollar, 10 cents of it will continue to be subject to property tax. The other 90 cents would not be subject to property tax, would be the exemption. And so what happens is, we will get to the incremental property value. Again, this is an example of $5.3 million. We'll deduct the pilot in my example, if given, is about $3.3 million. We'll add back the land, and the city assessor will then report that the true and full value for this property is $2 million. That $2 million will be subject to property taxation. The additional, that incremental amount between the $2 million and the $5.2 million true value will be exempt from property taxation. And then we'll do this on an annual basis. So the value of this property presumably will go up, and we'll go through this exercise on an annual basis to determine what the property tax exemption would be and what the property tax savings would be. The spreadsheet that was part of the packet too explains it a little bit, or probably better than I can. There is a column that's described as tax revenues. That's the total property taxes that will be paid on this property, which is, again, the original value plus that 10% incremental value. And then we've divided it out as to how much the taxing entities will receive on an annual basis. The column that says 90% of increment available for debt service, that's actually the property tax savings that would be enjoyed by this property on an annual basis. And then it, the other column shows the annual payment, which is the payment on the promissory note. The one thing I want to make sure that you understand is that the, where it says 90% of incremental available for debt service, that's the property tax savings. There really isn't a connection to the property tax savings and the obligation to make the payment on the promissory note. The developer has an obligation to continue to make the payment on the promissory note irrespective of what the amount of the property tax savings are on an annual basis. They will have an obligation to make that $55,000 a year payment, even if, for example, the property tax savings only get to $40,000, for example. There's still a $55,000 payment annually, okay? As far as the conditions for the pilot, there are a number of conditions that need to be satisfied before this pilot even comes into fruition, one of which is the property has to, the development has to be completed, finally completed before the pilot kicks in. So it probably wouldn't occur until the 2023 taxing year. Also, they have to sign all the loan documents, and there has to be no default under this agreement. The term of the pilot is shorter of 20 years or when the promissory note to the JDA is paid off, whichever occurs first. I'm expecting it probably to be the 20-year term because that's the way we've termed out the promissory note, to be a 20-year period of time to repay this. However, there are some events that terminate the pilot, that can terminate it early. Those are described in section 3.2.4. Those are statutory. The one I do want to point out is there's a change in ownership of the property. That would terminate you, a new owner of the building itself, the property, can assume the pilot. It would end at that point. That's by statute. Also, there is in section 7.5 of the development agreement, if the developer would discontinue business, that would end the pilot as well. And of course, if there's an event of default under the development agreement, that would also end the pilot. The promissory note, this was, is coming from the JDA. There's a shortfall for the developer as far as the cost for their development, but it's a $900,000 note that would be, or loan funds that would be provided by the JDA. They will, again, the annual payment will be $55,000 per year. I'm expecting that this will be done, or it's anticipated that this project will be done by December of 2022. And so the first year payment will be payable February 1 of 2023. There'll be a short year, not a full year of interest, so there'll be more principal paid on that first payment. The result is that the last year payment is about $34,000 then. Also, the JDA will be getting a first lien mortgage on the property itself to secure the repayment of that note, and will be getting personal guarantees from the owners and members of the LLC, again, to secure the repayment of that promissory note. Again, I want to reemphasize that the obligation dependent on the note is not dependent upon the property tax savings on an annual basis. That note has to be paid each and every year. The conditions for the lending is, again, the property has to be completed, so once the development is completed, then we'll do a closing for the loan. Also, that we receive a title policy that will demonstrate that the JD will have a first lien mortgage against the property. There are early payment requirements. For example, if the pilot would end under the terms that we just talked about, then the note becomes due and payable. Also, if there's a default under the development agreement itself, that also triggers an acceleration of the promissory note. And if there's a default under any of the terms of the mortgage or the guarantees, that would also trigger a repayment obligation. That summarizes, I think, the development agreement. If anybody has any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Goss. I just want to thank you and your team, that you guys did a phenomenal job putting this together, obviously protecting the city from as much as you, as much risk as possible. You're still promoting, allowing us to promote economic development and restoring a historic building in downtown. I think this is a win all the way around, so thank you for your work on that and your team.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Goss? Ted? Yeah, Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that default would terminate the agreement. Does it terminate it, or does it just give the city, presumably the council, the option to terminate?
Yeah, there, it's not an automatic, but if we've got a default under the development agreement, there's probably some other issues that are going on. So that's a remedy that the JDA or the city could pursue.
Very good. JDA, right?
Both.
Good. Both?
Because the development agreement is also, one of the remedies under the development agreement would be the city could terminate the pilot, and then the JDA could also then accelerate the promissory note payment.
We approved this as the JDA last week. We're approving it tonight as council.
Correct.
To echo the mayor, fantastic creative entrepreneurial work on this to address an important need downtown. Is the developer here tonight, or a representative?
Councilmember Weber. The principal, we've been in discussions with on this, and Mr. Goss had, has been Mr. Mike Kuntz, and we did invite him, but we did not hear back of whether he could make it.
Very good. That's disappointing. We've been working on this deal for a while. It would be nice to, we've been working on the financial technicalities, the policy technicalities, and I've heard some reassurances about what's going to be done with the building. It would have been nice to have heard from the developer. Nonetheless, I'll move approval.
Motion to approve. We have a second. A motion from Mr. Weber, a second from Mr. Sandy. Any further comments, Mr. Sandy, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo Mr. Weber's sentiments. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. I also, it would have been nice if Mr. Kuntz could have been here tonight. I don't know if he's traveling or what has kept him from being here. He is certainly a very busy person. The personal guarantees, Mr. Goss, that whomever, ultimately whomever are parties to the LLC will have a personal guarantee, that could potentially mean the property itself, correct?
Well, the property is actually going to be secured by a mortgage. So the property is owned by Block V LLC. That's the owner, Block V LLC will be granting the mortgage, so that's our security with respect to the building and the dirt. The personal guarantees is on top of that. So the members would then execute personal guarantees so that you'd have, if for some reason, there'd be some shortfall in the value of the property versus the amount of the liability, which is probably not going to be the case, since the note is only for $900,000, and presumably you got a $5 million. But if by chance there'd be some shortfall, you'd have the personal guarantee to back yourself up.
So I guess ultimately, this is a relatively safe and secure loan for the city of Grand Forks. I think it's great. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, it gives us an opportunity to have a local developer who's, they are sticking their necks out by making a very significant investment, and we're providing a low-interest loan that'll help push them over the finish line. I think it's great for the community and certainly a historic building that has needed to be renovated for quite some time, so I'm really looking forward to them getting it done.
Could I ask a follow-up?
Thank you, President. Yeah, Mr. Mark.
So there's the LLC that holds, that is the signature on the mortgage. There are the principals of the LLC who are offering personal guarantees on top of that.
Correct.
Is that correct? And so the LLC and the owners of the LLC, the owners could presumably change, but I believe with previous or similar JDA loans, if those personal guarantees, if the individuals we're doing business with shift, we have previously required new personal guarantees or some sort of recognition of the transfer. Is that, is that built into the agreement?
If there is.
Thought of everything else, so.
Well, and if, if I, for example, I was a member of that LLC, and I transferred my membership interest, I'm still not, my guarantee is still with me. I can't transfer my liability. So you can transfer your membership interest, but I still have a personal guarantee sitting out there with respect to that interest that I no longer own.
And so what we've done in the past is if there's been a request to transfer that, then we consider that and approve it or not.
Correct.
And that's what would be the case here. Very good. Thanks. I'm ready to vote, Mr. Weber.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, having the first lien on it for $900,000, the building's currently worth 1.6 with improvements. Hopefully, you don't have to worry about that problem. Grand Forks would be in a pretty tough spot if that was the case. Any further comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries unanimously. Now, did we, was that the public hearing, or do we need to get a motion on 3.1 as well? Or was that the same?
I understood you closed the public hearing or moving, that we moved into 3.1 to approve the resolution, is what I understood.
Did you, did you get, did you read that into record, 3.1?
I did not, but I will. That was the resolution of the City Council, the City of Grand Forks, approving payment in lieu of and property tax development agreement for Block V property.
Perfect. Thank you, Maureen. All right, without further business, motion to adjourn from Mr. Weber, second from Mr. Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Okay, let's call the Grand Forks City Council's Committee, the whole, for Monday, October 11th, to order under item 1. Welcome to roll call 1.1. Welcome to roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock. Cavani. Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
Here.
We have a call.
Great. Item 2.1, ordinance to amend city code section 210228 relating to minor serving and collecting money for alcoholic beverages in a restaurant. Mr. Phelan, good evening.
Hey, Council President Sandy and members of the committee, the whole. Number one, thank you as a city council, I think on behalf of the city of Grand Forks and on behalf of the business community, that all the modifications that you have made post and during, I guess we're still in the pandemic, during the pandemic regarding alcohol licenses. And I think many of those are things we would not have done if it were not for the pandemic and some of the challenges we had, and some of the experimentation that we worked. So I'm here today to, number one, thank you, and I think the business community really thanks the city council for moving forward with modifying some of those licenses to better serve the public, especially during some of the troubling times. And then some of those things carried forward beyond the emergency. And I think the important note is, our business community in the bar and restaurant industry have been very responsible. And one of the concerns going into making those modifications are concerns about things that may go wrong. And I think the point is, things have gone really well, and I think, I just want to let you guys know from that, from what I've heard from the chamber and the general business community. Tonight, in front of you is one more request. You do have a letter from the Grand Forks Chamber, and what the request is, is to move, to change minor serving and collecting money for alcohol beverages from the age of 19 to 18 regarding a restaurant, quote unquote, a restaurant. So Mr. Goss and his team over at the city attorney's office have drafted it. The ordinance change is relatively straightforward. It's going from age 19 to age 18. It does fit within state code or state statute, allows us to go to 18. From the surveys that we have done, I think it's generally true, probably not in every case, that most other comparable benchmark communities in the state North Dakota are at 18. And I know it's referenced in the, in the letter. Minnesota has a similar law with 18. So what they're asking for, obviously, to be square with a lot of their benchmark communities on both sides of the river, to help out with workforce, and you've already done some, already some initiatives on that, so that, they're all thankful for that. And if you have any questions, this really is coming from the business community, so it's coming from the chamber. And Ms. Kimberly Strom is here from the Grand Forks Chamber. Mr. Dave Zaveral, who's our chamber chair this year, is here on behalf. And really, from the business community themselves, the manager of Buffalo Wild Wings is here on behalf of the, of the business community himself. So Mr. Robyn is here too, if you have any questions, and I think all of them are in the back there that I see. So with that, I'd hand it back to you, Mr. Sandy.
Thank you. Mr. Phelan, any comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Weber?
Move approval.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Veen. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dockler descents. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Item 2.2, Renaissance Zone Project GF71, Harry's on DeMers. Mr. Conlin.
Good evening, Mr. Sandy, members of the committee. This item sounds familiar. It's because it is. Back in 2019, we approved a Renaissance Zone rehab remodel exemption for this project. At that time, separate legal entity fed up the building for a restaurant as well as some other significant building improvements and stuff. That recently was completed, which allows us then to separate Renaissance Zone exemption for the business entity operating out of the space. No city property tax component to this. It's just strictly a state income tax exemption, but since the Renaissance Zone is a partnership between the city and the state, we're the first step in that approval process. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Mr. Weber moves approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Sandy, before you, if I can say thank you to Mr. Conlin. Mr. Gershman reached out and was really thankful of the community development department, and specifically Mr. Conlin, for reaching out, and Mr. Gershman was not aware of it, but on our own accord, Andy stopped down and so, a lot of gratitude from Mr. Gershman that he pointed it out, so really want to thank Andy for being proactive.
That's great. Thank you, Andy. Good job, as always, though. Item 2.3, mortgage assumption request from Architectural Properties. Ms. Richards, good evening.
Good evening. I'm taking us back in time to our post-flood recovery era. The request before you is for authorization to assume a mortgage that was granted in 2000. At that time, a CDBG forgivable loan slash grant of 1.15 million was awarded to Architectural Properties, represented here tonight by Bill Schoen, to help with the redevelopment of what was called Third Street Market. That is the properties on the riverside of the first block of South Third Street, south of DeMers. Your staff reports have some visuals to show you what we're talking about. In any case, that assistance was secured by a 35-year forgivable mortgage. The terms were no payments for the first five years, and then 3 and 1/3% forgiven annually, assuming the property was completed as proposed and that it remained current on taxes and special assessments. Mr. Schoen has now been kind of contacted by a potential buyer and has requested that that buyer be allowed to assume the mortgage under similar terms. I'm certainly willing to stand for questions. Mr. Schoen and a representative of that buyer are here, and Mr. Schoen does have a really nice picture of the property, if you'd care to see it.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Weber?
I'll move approval, and then I have a question.
Is there a second? Second by Veen. Yes, Mr. Weber?
Mr. Schoen, can you give us some sense of what we might anticipate? Is things going to stay the same? Is there exciting new ideas? What might we be looking for?
Well, this is Mike Satter.
I'm sorry, can you come to the microphone, please?
This is the original artwork, by the way. This is from when we originally proposed the project back in 1999. I think it turned out almost exactly. It's been a great project.
That doesn't always happen, so thank you.
Oh, yeah. You're welcome. It's been a great project. I've been very proud of it, worked very hard on it, and I just am interested in simplifying my life a little bit at this age. And Mike and his group of investors would pretty much carry on as I have. And in fact, I think they're anticipating keeping the same manager of the property, so there would be pretty much a seamless transition. Would you agree, Mike?
Yeah, currently it's True Home Property Management, and I have a good relationship with Derek Nolte, the owner of that. And there's, there was a core group of five investors, and we've added a sixth. And if you'd like the names, it's myself, Eric Hopperstead out of Fargo, Adam Anvergnia out of Grand Forks, Ryan Quay of Grand Forks, well, now I was St. Cloud, and Kevin Warner in Grand Forks. And then a lot of people may know this name, Mike Up. So we have a good core of financial backing, property knowledge, and combined just a relationship we want to continue with Grand Forks, so we think it's an iconic building, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Lot of, lot of interesting Grand Forks out of Fargo and St. Cloud areas these days. It's nice to know that other people are recognizing what a great place we are to invest in. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. And are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And Mr. Schoen, thank you so much for what you've done for our community for all these years. Very much appreciate it. Not everybody sticks their money where their mouth is. I appreciate when people do. Number, item 2.4, any appointment to Historic Preservation Commission of Ms. J.C. Johnston Esquire? Anyone have any concerns?
Move approval.
Moved by Weber, second by Dockler. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And 2.5, surplus property for Waterworks. Does anybody have any issues with Waterworks selling their surplus property that was listed in the staff report?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigel. Is there a second? Second by Dockler, please. Thank you, Dockler. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veen, questions? Nope. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.6, budget amendment for the Public Building Fund. Mr. Storsted.
Yes, thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So at the direction of the mayor, staff has been asked to evaluate the layout of City Hall, both making sure that we're accessible to the public for business development as well as meeting the needs of staffing, both now and looking into the future. Phase one, we addressed first and third floors of City Hall. That included the relocation, as you're aware, of the planning community development to first floor. That currently occupies the space previously that housed the mayor and city administrator when they moved to the old City Hall part of second floor. when they moved to the old City Hall part of second floor. So now phase two, we're looking at both the engineering and inspections departments. Mr. Baselug was not able to attend the meeting tonight, but he has, he's really the point person for this project, and he asked me to let you know that he's available for your questions. He is in the office all week, and he will be here as well on Monday, and Todd and I, of course, can address your questions as well. But in, in working with Mr. Baselug, we did attach and draft layout. He is estimating the total cost on the project to be no more than $545,000. What we are looking to do tonight is, before we go over bid on this project, to approve budget amendments with $100,000 coming from existing budget and using cash balance from the Public Building Fund for the remainder, and then once the bids come back, that will come back to you, to City Council for approval.
Any comments or questions? I have a question. Storsted, so any, I don't recall seeing how much phase one cost us.
I don't have the exact number, but it was roughly $400,000.
Okay. Phase two is 550. Do we, is there a phase three?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, great. Mr. Veen, question?
Yeah, I don't know, Maureen, if you'll be able to answer this, but I see we do have one, Security Rolling Grill. What are we doing for overall staff security in, for the City Hall? Yeah, I mean, we're doing a major renovation, which is timely, and I concur entirely with that, but I think security, to me, is, is a paramount piece of any renovation we do here in City Hall, and I'm concerned that we're doing what needs to be done.
Mr. Veen, members of the committee, I know when they've been looking at design, they've kept security at the top of their mind as they're looking at. I know, for instance, in, in finance, we have a, a fourth window to direct most of the traffic without needing to come all the way into the office, but we did, if you remember, set aside some federal dollars for City Hall security, and that will still be looked at as part of the 2022 budget.
Yeah, if, if we could, I think that should be incorporated into the set of plans before we would implement.
Yes, we will do that. We'll make sure we have that discussion.
And if, if need be, maybe we don't need to make it public, but I'd be anxious to see what it looks like.
Yes, we will do that. I will make sure I have a, I will speak with Mr. Baselug to make sure that's discussed.
Are you insinuating, are you suggesting that it might cost a little more money to add the security features, and you're okay with that?
Yes, absolutely. If we're going to do this, I, I mean, I really think it's a great project for us, especially with what we've done between the Herald and what we're doing here, it makes sense. I'm just, I'm just not sure we've hit the mark on the security part.
And we do have ARPA funds set aside for City Hall security, $150,000.
But now would be the time to do it as.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Veen, we're certainly aware of that. I think we do have some security features in this current layout. I think the last pieces is really at the doors, and then, you know, we have a big chunk for cybersecurity too. So whether they're in the same, you know, design or not, I think they're enough different where there were not, there's no cost savings by necessarily adding to this project, but it's something that we're working on designing as well. But that won't be public, we'll kind of.
No, there's more than one way to accommodate that. I just want to make sure it's accommodated.
Yes.
Great. Any, any other comments or questions or thoughts?
I think it's great. I would entertain a motion, but a, a comment would be, you know, we had looked at plans several years ago for 8, 10, 12 million dollars worth of renovations, and to get, I mean, this is going to be a significant renovation of City Hall and providing, I think, very nice, comfortable space for, for our employees to work in, and, you know, if we can get this done for a million and throw a few dollars, especially with a grant over at the Herald Building and provide good quality space, I think we're, I think the city staff and the mayor have done a very good job taking care of the taxpayers' dollars. I think this is excellent.
So, and Mr. Weber?
Don't want to drag this out, but any intended discussion in the future about this room?
Oh, Mr. Sandy and Mr. Weber, I think there's always a, to harken back to our former council member, Terry Bierke, when he would say, "Are we ever going to be done, done with the downtown?" I'd say, "I hope we're never done." And so I think, similar to City Hall, I don't think we're ever going to be done with City Hall, because that means we're still alive and breathing. And so I think the next phase would be, one area that, as, as Mr. Sandy said, we, we kind of pulled out is this City Council chambers. We're going to have a terrific community boardroom over at the Herald Building, and so I think once we get that up and going, we really have to come back to City Council chambers, and how do we want this building to function, you know, the people's house right here, as a City Council chamber? So I would say this is probably the phase three, whether it's technology, as Mr. Sandy has gone on and on, we got to improve in the technology. So we're trying to get through this phase two, but I think phase three is really to figure out, what are we going to do here, and how does that play off of what we're doing over at the Grand Forks Herald Building?
Very good. Thanks. Are you still needing a motion?
Yeah, I am. Entertained, moved by Weber, second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Who's to adjourn?
Moved by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Dockler. First of all, I'd like to say happy birthday to my 17-year-old twins today before we adjourn. Any other comments? Hearing none.[1744.12]